Hey, what's up everybody? Welcome to the Ven Vamos Podcast. We're back here at my mom's house. We obviously have a screen, but we're not, you know, out in San Diego anymore. Since then, the Corona has definitely taken a toll, but it hasn't crushed our spirits. We've been able to go from San Diego to Arkansas to Colorado and now here back home. On this episode, we have a very special guest with us. She's a candidate for Miami Dade School Board in District Three. We have Lucia Baez-Geller. Thank you so much for being with us, Lucia. How are you?
I'm great, my dear. Thank you for having me.
Awesome. So I just want to ask right away, you're a teacher, correct?
Yes, I'm a teacher, 15 years at Miami Beach Senior High. Very proud of that.
So I actually had the pleasure of playing you guys in football. I don't remember if it was the 13, or I graduated 15, but I don't know what I played you guys, but you guys gave us a run for our money. I'll tell you that. And what do you teach at Miami Beach?
I'm a language arts and sociology teacher. I've taught all grades from ninth to 12th grade. But my specialty in the last few years has been teaching seniors. It's a really fun, great experience to work with students as they're looking forward to their future. So it's really rewarding. And I've also been working with the dual enrollment program where students can get college credits for being in my English class at beach.
Oh, that's wonderful. And honestly, when you work on those college credits early on, and then they're able to come into like an FIU Miami Dade, and they're already like 12 credits or 15, they're up a semester, and that's a great help. So do you think that because they're seniors, they get a little lazier than, so to speak, the freshmen? Have you taught all years or?
Yeah, yeah, I've taught all years. They may get a little lazier, but it's great because you can just kind of dangle graduation in front of them as a carrot. And so they usually straighten up once you talk about graduation. They get their act together.
Awesome. So what would you say in your time teaching has been like the most rewarding thing for you?
Well, there's a lot. I wouldn't even know where to start. But those personal connections are really important. I really love to get to know my students. I think it's the best way that we can educate people is by getting to know them, their dreams, their interests and their talents, because ultimately, I'm teaching them English, but I'm educating the whole student. And I need to be able to touch their hearts before I can ever touch their minds. And that's something that I learned really early on.
Okay, so did you always want to be a teacher? Or when you were growing up, you had other aspirations?
Yep, I've always wanted to be a teacher. When I was little, I would play school and give all my teddy bears tests. I would make pretend I was my teacher. And I was most definitely the teacher's pet every year. And I probably got made fun of a lot, but it's okay. I loved it. And I loved being able to aid and support my teachers. I know a lot of them loved it when I would organize their desks. And now students do that for me. So it's a circle of life. It's really great.
Right. And just to segue into your campaign, what made you decide to run for school board?
Well, there's a lot of reasons. I actually have been advocating for teachers, parents, schools, communities, pretty much my entire teaching career, so all 15 years. It's become really a part of me to go out, represent the needs of the community, to speak out where I see injustices. So I've been doing that for a long time. And when the seat, it's an open seat, when it opened up, because Dr. Karp retired, and he's going to go on and pursue other things. But when it opened up, it felt like the perfect time. It was kind of like an intersection of, I have a lot of classroom experience. I have a lot of community and advocacy experience, and I want to bring them to the table. I want to use everything that I know for the purposes of moving all of our schools forward.
Right, awesome. And so even myself, I don't necessarily know too much about how the school board works, or what type of roles a member of the school board in your district, which is District Three. So what exactly is it that you would be filling in when you win your election?
Yes, so basically, we are the kind of programming and policy building body. We kind of govern how money is going to be spent. We make sure that we're cutting out waste and that we are efficient and that we're not double dipping in different things. But essentially, we make the policy and the programs that are going to be included in the budget and then disseminated into schools.
Awesome. And I can imagine that, you know, there's a difference in opinions amongst that same board. So what are your plans to work in collaboration with your future school board members?
Yeah, well lobbying at the state level, I know that working across the aisle is important. You have to be able to communicate with people that have different ideas with you. That's how we get change and progress. If we all thought the same, nothing would ever change. So you have to be able to work with others, communicate. And luckily, I've had a lot of experience talking to people who may not have the same point of view or values. And it's important that we validate everybody's point of view. So for starters, it's just like a classroom. When people talk, you want to make sure that they feel heard, that you validate, and that you're also not always just trying to persuade. Sometimes people just have their ideas and they don't want them to change. So instead, maybe trying to find a commonality. If they're on one side and I'm on the other, where can we meet in the middle? Because it's really not about personalities when you're on the school board. It's also really not about politics, or at least it shouldn't be. What it should really be about is presenting families and students an opportunity to get ahead in life. And that's what I'm going to be focusing on mostly.
Right. And you just bring up such a great point, that it should not be about politics, but sadly, it keeps becoming this almost like race to greatness, rather than a race to help those that position is supposed to represent. You're one of the only candidates that has actually fundraised on her own, correct?
Yes, it's been one of the greatest, I mean, moments of my life is that all of my friends and family, even students, have come out fundraised. I have over 200 unique donors. I certainly have the most amount of donors in my race.
So how would you categorize that, like how you're running your campaign, right? So when we've worked with other clients, it really does depend on a variety of needs, right? Some are more adept than others. You're a first-time candidate, correct? So how has been running your first campaign been for you?
It's been great. I think we are essentially the definition of grassroots. We are going person by person, household by household, and ensuring that there's that personal touch, that by the time people get to the ballot, they've either met me, or they've met one of my volunteers, or they've talked to us, or they've had a really positive experience while seeing me out at an event. We want every person, every vote, to come from people that have invested and that are sure that I'm going to represent them well. So we're really doing, and we really started the grassroots with the petitions. We were going to try to qualify for the seat by petition, but of course, with COVID, once March happened.
Your efforts, I'll tell you that.
It really hurt our efforts. We were very close, though. We had already collected 1,000 of the 1,500 petitions. Well, on our way, and that was really where the grassroots effort started, was qualifying by petition. That was our main point.
So apart from, you know, running an intricate campaign, because that's a lot of moving pieces, you've also been a part of a lot of these events, because I followed you on social media long before you and I actually connected. And what I found very interesting is that your approach is a very humanitarian one. Why do you go to these events? What do you see them as? So I'm sorry, sorry to cut you off, like the backpack. I saw you did the backpacks, the food drives. You also went to a Black Lives Matter process, a couple of those. So these events, how do you see them in your campaign?
Well, for me, community is everything. I can't do anything, even as a teacher, without my community, whether that's the parents, the teachers, the students. I always, I can't do anything alone. So community building and being out there with people is important. But then when you're out there and you're an ally, and you are, you're kind of saying, I hear you, I see you, and I want to help, that's very important to me. And as the next school board member, I'm going to be that person that people know they can reach out to. Right now, I think there's a lot of, school board members are kind of the farthest away from a parent's mind when they need help. They may go to family, maybe a teacher. Sometimes they call the principal, but for the most part, I feel that parents feel isolated in many ways, especially if they're low income and they're working all day long. They don't have time to go to the school. I've seen that isolation. I know what it's like when a parent feels like they don't know how to help their child. And so I want to be out there in front of the community saying, come to me. I'm ready and I'm willing and I have the tools, and we're going to work on bringing your students to a good life together.
You know, and that's such a good point that you bring up about a parent's involvement. So when, at least when I, because I'm a product of Miami Dade Public Schools as well, all 12 of my years were in a Miami Dade school. What I noticed is that if, when you have low-income parents, their priority sadly is a more primal one, which is to feed the child versus to educate. So when, I can recall my parents always making it to PTA, but that wasn't the experience. Or what's it, the Parent Teacher Conference, that, you know, they opened up the school and everybody just kind of has that powwow. How important?
Open house.
Open house, there you go, there you go, there you go. I've been up for a couple of years, so it's fading. What, like, how important is the parent-teacher communication? Because, you know, it doesn't always happen. And I would say that's not normal anymore. Like, parents and teachers do not communicate. As I would say, they either should or would need. So like, in your dynamic, what has been your experience with that?
Yeah, I think it's absolutely, the most important thing is to involve and include parents in the school decision-making, and also in the decision-making about their children. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen enough, because what I told you, parents do have, like you said, primal needs they need to take care of way before they can think of anything else. And in our community in Miami Dade, we find a lot of that. We find a lot of struggling households, a lot of struggling communities. But it's actually the most important thing for parents to, not to be involved, because we can't put the onus of being involved on them. We have to put it on us as a school. We have to do better. As a school board, as a county, we have to do better to make sure that our parents can participate, whether it's making sure that everything we put out is in all three of our languages, Spanish, English, Creole. We're pretty good about that at the district level. But at the school site levels, I've seen that that's not the case. It's pretty much only English. Our district does do that, though. So whether it's a language barrier, whether it's a time barrier, a lot of our PTSA meetings happen during the day. I mean, my mom could not have gone to a PTSA meeting during the day she was working. Right, right. But a lot of them, as I've been traveling the district from north to south, when I've been looking up the PTSA's, because I wanted to go introduce myself, I actually couldn't go either, because I was at Beach High working. So I was like, this is not a great model. You know, if a parent wants to get involved. So whatever barriers people, parents are having, we need to go out there and talk to them, figure out what we could do to bring them onto our campus, because everybody wins when parents are involved. It's truly a great thing.
So Miami Dade County is one of the largest districts in America, right? And your district encompasses some of the richest areas of our Miami Dade. So could you talk to us a little bit about what areas your district encompasses? And what have been like your strategies to reach out to these people? Because you encompass a wide range, I'd say. And there's microcosms of poverty, and then microcosms of like extreme wealth, right? So how do you go about talking to this wide variety of people?
Yeah, I think really the key to it all in the district is to see every community as having their own unique needs, whether it's in the classroom or at the district level. What we know is there's no one-size-fits-all approach in education. Even within a classroom, there's no one-size-fits-all approach. I have to approach things differently with every student. And the same with the district. There's nothing that I could do on the north end that's going to be the same as what I'm going to do on the south end. And I think it's really about listening, learning, having those meetings with the PTSA's, with the neighborhood associations, with everybody that's involved. Because teachers in a school is one part of the education system. It's one part. It's not the whole system. Part of the education system is the businesses around the school. Are there partners that we can engage with, who has skills or talents that they could come and share with the students at that school? So there's a lot of factors around every community within the district that's going to affect what we do there. And my approach has been just to listen and learn, to go in knowing that I don't know everything and that I'm ready to be educated as to what I can do for them.
Okay, so what are the geographical areas, just so we can clarify for people who might not even, because we'll have people listening that'll live in your district, won't even know you're running, you know?
I know. This is really important. Well, it starts on the south end with a small section of Brickell, like the northernmost part of Brickell. And then it goes all the way through Miami Beach, including all the municipalities such as North Bay Village, Surfside, and Ball Harbor. And then it keeps going up north on Collins or A1A, through Sunny Isles Beach and Aventura. And then it takes the easternmost part of North Miami and North Miami Beach. So not all of North Miami Beach, but just parts of it.
Okay, so that's a lot of people that live in between that box that we just painted. What has, so what other schools are in that district as well, like the high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, just so that again, people understand what we're talking about here?
Well, there's a lot. There's over 40. I'd have to pull up my list and name.
So like the high school, like what's like the biggest high school?
The main high schools would be North Miami Beach, Crop, Alonso Tracy Morning, and Beach High.
Okay, wonderful. Now, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about what are some of the ideas that you want to bring? How, so you said that there are some things that we could take out or maybe revitalize. Could you give us an example of something?
Absolutely. Well, the ideas that I really want to bring, first of all, is we want to make sure every student has a world-class education. And what that means to me personally is we want to have an education that's meaningful and real, that students can apply to the real world. Because when it comes to information now, students have access to all information. They don't need me to know what a poem, you know, by John Donne means. They could just Google search it, right? So they don't need me for that. But they need me to know how this applies to their life, what they can see and learn from it. And a lot of that includes engaging with partners outside of the community to provide students with real-world application. So that means hands-on learning, internships, being able to go off-campus and kind of like be in the real world in different ways. I think that's important.
When I was, so because I was an immigrant, me and my mom and my dad came in 2001. So, you know, when you're just starting out in America, and especially in Miami, where you have a lot of migration, like, they would move and work into a lot of different jobs. So I went to about 10 different elementary schools. And when I stayed, I went to South Side Elementary and.
Oh yeah, that's in the district?
No way. Okay, they have a thing where they work with the museums that are right there in downtown. And they use the Metro Mover. And I remember being, you know, holding my teacher's hand in the Metro Mover. And that right there, seeing like real people, like as very young, that like almost inspired me. I was like, I want to do stuff, you know? And I know that I was very lucky going to that school, because not every Miami Dade school had that partnership with the museum. And it was all free. Like, we would go, I remember it was like almost every two Thursdays, we would have a class at the museum. Like, it was like a whole thing, you know?
Yeah, they are a museum school.
I would imagine that you're in favor of like continuing that and see how we can create that and more learning.
Absolutely. And when it comes to education, I'm also really in favor of opening up access to advanced academics. I'm a firm believer that our highest-level classes need to represent the school. So if we have a Title I school with a majority of low-income students, our highest-level classes should represent that. If we have a minority-majority school where most students are Hispanic or African-American or Caribbean, then our most advanced classes should represent that as well. And unfortunately, that's not the case. We see that a lot of our advanced classes are still not necessarily as diverse as we want them to be.
Okay, so I'll give you a quick anecdote of my school, right? And I'll speak very freely here, because this is what I observed. When I went to Gables, right, I was in the International Backalord Program. It was a very advanced program, so I could imagine that this is what you mean of the representativeness of a school's education. So I recall, it was a very rigorous, very tough. Not all the students made it, but there definitely was a sort of unintentional segregation, so to speak. Because I was one of the very few brown children in the classes. And then if you see where the other, you know, students of color, they weren't in honors classes, without a shadow of a doubt. But it definitely was more, it did not look representative of our school, when you see with the classes that I was in. So what has been your experience in like the more advanced classes and not being as representative?
Right, well, that's the same. And there's issues with that at my school as well. But what we really want to focus on is ensuring that from early on, our students are all getting the same messaging that they can and that they will achieve. And I'm not sure that that is happening. I think the issue that we're both talking about, this in-school segregation, or what we call in-school stratification, either way, is happening across the board, everywhere. And so from early on, students are separated and categorized, maybe based on some arbitrary number, or, you know, it doesn't really correlate. And so we need to start thinking about the messages we're sending to students from the beginning. Should we have assessments and evaluations and all that? Of course. I'm not trying to ball it all and throw it all away. That would not make sense. What I am trying to do is to ensure that the messaging and the tracking and the labeling, we need to reconfigure that. Because my experience is that there are kids that I see that are overachievers, are great, are wonderful. And when you try to promote them to IV or AP, they immediately put the brakes on that. And I always, you know, of course, we work through it, but that idea, their initial idea of, I can't.
Yeah, like, I see what you're saying, because there were many of my peers, right, that they said, I can't, it's not for me, when even their own grades would show that they were and they could. So, you know, I'm sorry to understand what you're saying, because I think I'm very blessed that I had a mom that told me I was going to be a superhero when I grew up. And that, and I bought it, you know? Because if you consistently hear it, and whether the child gets that at home, it most definitely should be reinforced in the school's curriculum. So do you think that it starts more with the actual teachers? Or in the design of the programming? Because I've met some wonderful teachers, and I've also met some horrible teachers, I'll put it frank. But what would you say is more?
I love what you just asked me, because I do think that's a great clarification. When I say messaging, it doesn't mean that teachers are telling kids, you can't. It's the design of the system. And thank you so much for bringing that up. But yeah, the way that we have our system designed to separate and alternative curriculums, like, it almost seems at some schools, like there's two actual separate schools that exist.
I truly feel, and again, I loved my experience. My alma mater is incredible. I always say that if you went to Gables, you're like, you're just better. And I know that's my bias, but but in the experience, there really is a separation. And it's not even, it's a separation, like geographically, because all my classes were in the new building, right? And my, I feel that my peers didn't feel the same way, how I felt about education, because I liked going to school. I wanted to engage with my peers. And that was not experienced by the 3,000-plus students at my high school.
Right. And unfortunately, it's the students that maybe come to school and are, you know, they're having bad family lives, or, you know, their parents cannot provide them with the support in any way that they need. Then they come to school, and then we doubly fail them, because they really, really needed us. And instead, we just kind of said, well, you're just mediocre. Stay here. And, you know, if you make it through, great. If not, forget it. And it's not intentional. And that's, I just, again, I want to say, it's not intentional. No teacher is sitting there telling kids, you can't go away. Maybe, but none that I've met in my 15 years as a teacher or in all my years as a student, I've, you know, teachers are great. It's, the issue is that we have a system that's designed to put kids in competition with each other. And that's the real core of it, is we're incorporating, you know, in society, that individualistic mentality, like, get ahead in life. It doesn't matter what you have to do. Do what you have to do to get ahead. It's that individualistic mentality that we're applying in our schools. And it doesn't work, because a school should be a family. A school should be a community. A school should be your support, your rock, you know? And then they come to school, and we say, you got to be better than the person next to you, or you're going to fall behind. And that's not a model that we need to be replicating in our schools.
That's what you're saying. And I personally come from a sports background, where competition is seen as the way in which you achieve excellence. But when you put it in that kind of like frame of the student, they really do, like, it's almost like ingrained, like you can tell who is going to do what. And that's not true. It just simply isn't. I wanted to talk to you about your endorsements, because apart from running a really robust campaign, you've been able to get the attention of a lot of already, you know, household names and within Florida politics, right? I think one of the coolest endorsements that you got is from Shev. I think that guy is super dope. Like, his way of speaking and the way how he can work with literally anybody, I envy it. So you getting his endorsements, I go, if he likes you, like, you're off, you know? So how's it been working with already established elected officials and, you know, getting them to support you?
Yeah, it's really been amazing. It's been an honor. And I think at the beginning, I was very kind of, you know, shy and hesitant to reach out to people and ask them. Because for the most part, these are people that have, I've been working alongside with on issues in Tallahassee, on issues in DC, on issues here in the county. And that, they have been a source of inspiration for me. And so to turn around now and have them say that they believe in me, after I've seen them as like role models, people that I think do great things in the community, has been a great honor. And I'm just really excited, because the connections that I've made, I haven't made socially. I've made them in the trenches, fighting for justice, you know? I didn't meet them at a cocktail party, you know? I met them on the streets protesting. I met them here. I met them there. I met them, you know, when we were trying to get a bill passed. You know, I met them doing the work of justice in our community. And they all believe in a better system, in a better world. And I'm just really inspired by it.
First ever time that we had to cut off a podcast, because sadly, I left my charger at Bowser's house. This is great, guys. But Lucia, thank you again for joining back to the podcast.
And thanks for having me again.
So where we left off, we were talking about your endorsements, right? I've been seeing you on social media and seeing that you've had a lot of different people endorse you. So how do you go about that? How do you network with them? And how do you get their support?
Well, so for me, a lot of these relationships go way back for over a decade. And so these are people that I've been working with in the trenches, ensuring that their communities and my community is getting what they deserve and that they are advocating and speaking up for the neediest communities. And that's something that we've been doing together. Everybody that's endorsed me is somebody that truly believes in public education, has worked hard to protect public education. And a lot of them are actually the reason why we have been able to have a lot of gains and have been able to protect our schools, is because these people are up there legislating and kind of fighting against really bad bills that take away the power of our schools down here.
So what do you think is a parent's involvement in like that legislative process? You know, not everybody understands how our political process works, or maybe how they can make a change, right? So what is, so to speak, the structure that our state legislation plays on what happens in our schools? So what is sort of speak the structure that our state legislation plays on what happens in our schools?
Uh, well, I mean, essentially, they uh not only uh protect the budget and and see how much money is going to be put into education, uh but that determines our per pupil spending. That determines uh our testing regimes, they determine uh how much we're gonna pay teachers. I mean, a lot of what we do in schools happens at the state level. The school board then decides how to implement and how to kind of, with whatever money is allocated, how to do the best with our communities. But really, from the top, our state legislator li- legislators are the ones that really make the the magic happen, and unfortunately, over the last few years, uh we haven't had the major support that we ha- need to kind of keep up with the changing conditions in our schools. And the legislators that have backed me have been the ones to speak up and say that, so I'm really proud of that.
Awesome, so if you, um, wh- where where do you see deficiencies or overspending? Or where we're and where do you see where it should go or where there is a dire need now from what you've seen uh as a teacher?
Yeah, well, there's a dire need now for safety overall. I mean, right now, it's looking like we're going to be, um, it's looking like we're gonna be opening for online for the first quarter. And so uh we wanna make sure that um when it comes to budget and safety, that we're spending in the ways that are protecting lives. Right now, it's a matter of life and death, and so we have to do what we have to do to protect lives. Literally, our lives are in danger if we don't uh spend correctly. But in moving forward, I would wanna make sure, where are we duplicating efforts? So there's a lot of programs across the board that do the same thing, that we're investing in. And I would want to cut out waste. For example, um at our school, we have three different math tutorial programs that we use, and we're paying for that. So we would want to see where our e- efforts are duplicated. And we also want to ensure that in moving forward, our money and our spending matches our values. So if we're saying we want mental health resources and we want students to feel um safe in in schools, then our spending should reflect that. If our spending doesn't, we need to go back in, and that's where I will be mostly putting my effort, is to make sure that our our actions match our values.
Awesome, and you know, you kind of already answered where you stand on the whole reopening schools coming August, right? So you you mentioned the first quarter, we're talking about the four quarters in the in the school year, right? So that's like nine weeks from what schools are supposed to start out?
Yes, yeah, so it's every nine weeks, there's four quarters.
Okay, perfect, so what would be, so to speak, maybe like a hybrid uh strategy? What do you think could possibly happen? Is it too soon to really tell, uh based off of what you've been seeing with the data uh for reopening schools? Wha- wha- what is it looking like?
It's never too soon to be talking about reopening schools. Uh, right now, we're in phase one, we do not foresee that we will be opening in on August twenty-fourth. Uh however, we need to be having the conversations about how we will reopen right now. In terms of implementation, logistics, sanitation, safety, all that needs to be lined up and put out immediately. Because that's how we will ensure that we are safe, is we let principals know, we let everybody know what the plan is, so that at every school site, they can set up the protocols as they wish. And the transition from phase one to phase two, from fully distance learning to hybrid and and face-to-face, is something that's gonna require a lot of logistics, and it's gonna require the whole school and a lot of stakeholders, including from the top all the way down to the bottom, everybody's included in this, the nurses, the custodians, the parents. It's gonna be a huge mission to get everybody on board, so we need to be talking about it right now.
Right, so within all of this new logistical planning, uh wh- how how was the uh, cause a lot of students still depend on uh schools for their meals, so if they're gonna be, you know, learning at home, how like, are they still doing like pickups, like what what's going on with, are the schools still providing meals, like what's?
Well, we hope, I mean, that would be, that would be the hope, but again, we're not even there yet. And we're honestly not even there yet with the distance learning. We haven't made really a plan, I know they've spoken about my school online, they've spoken about having higher expectations for every teacher and every classroom, and that's great. But that needs to be said, first of all, the first thing to happen is a decision needs to be made. We need to go ahead and make it official.
What are your, what are your thoughts on charter schools and their relationship with like the the public schools?
Charter schools are really interesting because the reason that they have really proliferated and succeeded, let's say, in uh getting students and getting parents to come on board, is because there were concerns about our public schools. Uh what's been interesting is the fact that in our county, for example, we had the most rapid kind of uh uncontrolled growth of charter schools in really most of the country. We went from zero to over a hundred in like two years. So that that growth was very exponential. And and it arose from the fact that parents were not happy with the education in some way or another that their students were receiving. So for me personally, I'm a public school teacher, I'm pro-public schools. I'm all, I mean, I'm all for public schools, and that's important. But as a school board member, I have to sit back and say, why were our public schools not enough for these parents? Even if it was five, ten years ago that they started. So we wanna make sure we have the conditions of our public schools, the the gaps, the traditional gaps that are happening. We wanna address those specifically. But as a school board member, I also represent all of the charter school students also. Um especially if they're they're nonprofit charter schools, that falls under my jurisdiction. So I have to be a school board member for all, and I have to be listening to the needs of that community as well. But I also want to look at, how did this happen? What what is going on in these schools that is causing people to look for alternatives?
Are teachers that work at at charter schools also can form a part of the union? Uh the the the, what's what's U T, U T, United Teachers?
United Teachers of Day. A a school board employee, any teacher that works um for the Miami-Dade County Public School System can join uh United Teachers of Day.
And are there teachers that are not a part of the union as well? Is it like a cha- like challenge by choice? And what are the benefits of being a part of the union? Um I, you know, I've never been in like a profession, so I've never been in a union, so I don't know how those things work. And I think the younger people also don't kind of understand, so what is the union, what does it do, and why does it exist?
Our uh our state is a right-to-work state, so not all teachers who teach at a public school have to join the union. It's a, it's a choice, it's it's really just um whether you believe in collective bargaining and in the values and principles of union membership. Uh for us, uh whatever our union does applies to all teachers. So you don't necessarily get any special benefits in your contract by being a part of the union, but you get other sorts of benefits such as representation and being able to vote on different parts of the contract, et cetera. So every teacher is represented by our union pretty much. Um, I think it's important to be a union member, I believe in union values. Um but in this state, unfortunately, you can get all the benefits of being in a union without actually being in one. So it's unfortunate, if we had more people join, then we would be a lot stronger. And right now, we have about half of our Miami-Dade County public school teachers are um part of the union and half are not.
Right, and apart from being i- in the union, you're very involved in the in the local community with the events. So what has been like your favorite event that you've gone to in recent in recent times?
Well, honestly, for me, my favorite events are the food drive distributions. I really enjoy that um moment of being able to provide a family or somebody in need with those basic survival skills, you know? Food, water, shelter, we can't do anything without those three things. And to know in the community that there are people who are missing one or all three of those are are, it's really sad. And so the food drives have been important, not only now, but always. Um just providing people that continuity in their life, that they don't have to worry about their next meal, opens them up to be able to focus on other things and and moving their families forward. And I know for a fact that a lot of our families, our school children's families, they're suffering right now. And so being able to provide them any sort of comfort is really my priority.
So why are you the the right choice for this seat, for school board?
I would say, when it comes to the school board, we want somebody that's tested and true. We want somebody whose number one priority has been education, and that's me. If you count the time between being a student and all my uh studies, my graduate studies, and the time that I've been a teacher, I have basically been in a school my entire life, so for over thirty years. So you want somebody whose main priority is education. I went to school to be a teacher, um I, it's not a fallback career, it wasn't a second choice. It was my first choice, and I've made schools my first choice and my priority. I've also have a a record of using my voice, I haven't just been a teacher on the sidelines. I've been a teacher on the front lines, ensuring that we can improve our profession, improve our schools, improve our students' lives pretty much. And I've been doing that as a union steward and as a member of the League of Women Voters here in Miami-Dade County, speaking up for the issues that matter. So that's really the, what I believe in my legacy, lies in being someone that people can really count on to speak up and speak out. I do not plan on just making this a passive role, it's an active role for me. I'm gonna be out there in the in the community, ensuring that uh people's needs are being heard. And I I hope to continue that legacy of speaking out and being a voice for everybody.
Awesome, and when you're elected, what would be your top priority when you to focus on?
Yes, well, of course, like I said, top priority is safety. We wanna make sure that our students' physical safety ism- is being met or their physical safety needs are being met, that they feel comfortable to go to school, that they can put aside a lot of those anxieties. Pre-COVID, the anxieties were violence, gun violence, drugs, abuse, all of that. We wanna make environments, inclusive environments in our school, where students can feel free to just come to learn. And and that would be the best thing that we could do, so it's safety will do that. But it doesn't just mean having more police officers, it means mental health resources, having adult um kind of mentors in each school that can guide students, that can help them, that can reach out if something's not going right. So that's gonna be one of my first uh priorities, is having a inclusive environment where we're listening to students all the time. But I also wanna review a lot of the contract policies in terms of our discipline for students. We want it to be um more rehabilitative, not just always punishing them, right?
I, can I just stop right there? I've been, I was suspended a couple of times when I was elementary school. No, yeah, 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 and I don't think that made me a bad kid, but I definitely was like, like, you know, you would get into fights or you would like just have like verbal things and and it starts at at a really young age. So is there, how do I say, like, is there like a timeliness to when these interventions could happen? Like, I imagine that if it's earlier and it's more preventative and rehabilitative, it would, it should start at like the elementary schools.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a really great point, is our response to our intervention responses need to be early on in life, not just for behavioral problems, but emotional problems. Uh things that really hold back students from being their full selves, that needs to be addressed early on. We also wanna make sure that our policies in terms of teacher, also teacher discipline, that those are also reviewed. I know now with the cameras in class, things could be taken out of context, or, you know, students can lie, things like that. I think we need to review how we're going about making our schools a good working and learning environment. And then, of course, like we talked about earlier, I'd like to review the budget, make sure that we are spending efficiently. Um and ensuring, my, for me, the first thing I'm gonna do is ensuring that I know enough about the communities I represent to be able to then um begin the decision-making process, which I will be doing alongside the communities. But I need to be navigating uh the PTSAs, the neighborhood housing associ- associations, the elected officials in every city that I represent. I would need to be making contact with them and ensuring that I'm gonna be representing them as best as I can.
I, when I went to school, we took the FCAT, that's still going on, right?
Well, the FSA, yeah.
So it like changed?
Uh, I mean, they, the standards changed here in Florida, so they changed the testing name, but it's the same idea, pretty much.
And are schools still being like, get like, cause I I I recall that they would get their budgets based upon those test scores, and is is that still going on?
Yeah, well, they're not basing necessarily the budget or the money that they receive based on that. But what happens is that there are, in fact, kind of punishments that happen. The more that you're not performing, the more, for example, that they then regulate your curriculum. So they'll come in and tell you what to teach. They take away a lot of your autonomy as a teacher and as a school. And so even though there's no monetary pitfalls, right now, there are because it becomes a more regimented environment, that's not necessarily good for students.
That sounds like a double negative, because I feel like most of those schools that might not meet those criterias have a lot of other factors that play into why the students aren't performing, you know, so if that and so then if you were to take away that school's like, so to speak, autonomy, then you probably could like stifle like how they could fix those problems on a more like per-case basis, right? So.
Absolutely.
So, damn, that sounds, I I see, I see what's going on, because to them, it's like, oh, I need to come in because it's not working out. So.
Right.
Would you say that a lot, um, sort of speak like the solutions to students' problems start more like, um, are they like social, or are they like struck, like, like systematic, like, you know, I'm trying to say like, um, I don't know if I'm asking this properly, cause I I I might not be getting the idea properly, but, cause at least when I went to school, I think, you know, I I grew up poor, but if it weren't for my mom, right, that was like just pushing me, always checking my homework, always making sure I got to school on time, that's why I think it worked out. I know my peers didn't have that benefit, or at least not all of them did. So, and it showed later on in life. So I feel like it's hard to measure like a school's success because these kids do- don't grow up until like way later, like, so what what are, what I'm really trying to say is, what are the like proper metrics to measure a school's success?
Yeah, well, for me personally, I too also grew up poor. And for me, the measurement of success is how how much we can increase and and better the lives of our students. How much we can get them up the social class ladder, the economic opportunity ladder, how much we could do to to raise their social mobility. So you could come from a lower income or middle-class family, and it's not really where you began, but it's where you ended. So I think making all of our schools really focused on student success and student outcomes, what we call post-secondary outcomes, is gonna be great. So when we look into post-secondary outcomes, though, it can't just be, did the student go to college? Because I know plenty of my students that have gone to college.
And hated, and they leave and they go somewhere else, like a lot, like college has stopped kind of being the go-to route.
Right, right, and it 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 might not be great for them, but we have to prepare them at least to compete. And if college it is, that's great. However, I know plenty of students that have their degrees, do go to college, but they don't necessarily end up in a situation where their lives have, yeah, have improved. They may not be in a in a better income bracket, they may not be able to move on up to, you know, white-collar work, whatever it is, they're not getting the gains that they're working for. And the thing is, is we tell students, you know, work hard, be good, succeed, and and you're gonna be okay. And unfortunately, there's a lot of students that work really hard and they still fall through the cracks. And it's, it's not fair, and we can't keep promising them that we're going to help them and get ahead, and then you do everything right, and you still have a mediocre kind of outcome, that's not good, so.
Well, when you size yourself up with the other candidates, at least from me as a voter standpoint, I like the fact that you go to these events, because I haven't seen any of your competition do the ladder, right? So, um, what would be sort of speak when you're elected? Um, like your, your, like your vision of like the of Miami Dade Public Schools, where would you wanna see at least your district be? Um, maybe uh to, how how long is your term? Two years, four years?
Four years.
Four years. So halfway into your term, where would you like to see your uh your work go?
Well, I'd love to see our schools be, again, inclusive of all communities. I'd also like to see um a district that works with community groups throughout the county. Cause often our community groups are doing a lot of the work that, you know, would take us forever. They're on the ground, meeting families, going to people's homes, knowing people by name. So these are the people that we want to be working with us because they have a unique insight. So I would like to see greater partnerships with community organizations, greater partnerships with um. Uh, businesses and private, public-private partnerships. I would like to see where everybody is involved in investing in our schools. And it's not just in isolation, where you could be somebody who is maybe very successful, doesn't have kids. Or is not interested in in schools necessarily, but has a passion for something like robotics and wants to share that. So we want to create an open space where people can invest their time, their talent. And and get returns too, because who knows that they could come into a school and later on that becomes their employee. It could be somebody that they're gonna work with. So my vision is greater partnerships, uh, greater inclusion of all communities. And just overall being able to um address the needs. I want to see uh parents, families coming to school board meetings, feeling invited and welcome. To come and speak their truth. And that's something that I find very important because it's somebody that was on the other side. That I wanted my voice to be heard and our needs to be heard. Um, I'm somebody who definitely wants. Others to be heard as well.
Awesome. So when, when is your election?
August eighteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, perfect, guys. So make sure that you guys low vote for Lucia. Let's do it. We're here. And could you just shout out your social media so they know where to follow you?
Absolutely. Follow me at Elect Lucia Bias Geller on all platforms.
Okay, Lucia, thank you so much for being with us. We really appreciate it. And guys, have a great rest of your day. Hey, you just sat through the whole podcast. If you like what you heard, make sure to subscribe and comment what your favorite part was. Don't forget to follow us on Instagram and Twitter at Ven Vamos. If you're listening to this on the audio version, give us a five-star rating. Thank you and have a great day.